On the arguments and evidence. Persons who are testifying, please give your name and full name and mailing address, and if you appear as a representative, identify who you represent. Is there a presentation by the applicant?
Yeah, I was thinking over, can you do it over again?
Vito Ferrelli, three or four times I've been in Maxwell Lane, Archgate Ward, 107102. I want to clarify on the application, and it's shown on the site plan and in your packet, that the request is actually, I think it's mistyped in this agenda, but it's actually a two-foot setback reduction. So net two feet versus the three. And it's shown on the site plan. So we would be building the east facade of the building two feet away from the east property line. So that's the request, just so we're all clear. And to follow up, as Jeff Adams mentioned, this is an undersized lot, around 2,500 square feet. What we plan on, what we're proposing to do is replace the existing dwelling to a similar size as what is currently there by improving the west, the current west setback, which is in close proximity to the west property line.
It's still the same thing.
There's still being, because I don't see that. I'm sorry.
So by replacing the existing dwelling and with this request of reducing the east setback to two feet, we would build a similar residence on the lot that would meet both the north setback line of 15 foot, the rear setback on the south to 15 foot. We would have a five-foot west setback line and then two-foot along the alley on the east. Looking at it from a fire code and safety, by providing the five-foot setback on the west, we create the zoning guidelines, but also the adequate separation between the property to the west. And by requesting the setback reduction on the east along the alley, we feel that it doesn't serve any negative safety hazard to the area. As Jeff mentioned, we plan on building a single-family residence here on the property. That would be a two-bedroom with a kitchen, living, dining upstairs in a similar configuration to the current house that's on the site. There was a, there's been some correspondence and I think letters of support that you probably have in your packet from the neighbors, and there's, the current concept of the house is still in early stages of development, but we plan on putting full intentions of having upper clerestory windows to create privacy from the neighbors to the east as well as the west. The majority of the views and window configuration will be on both the south and the north facade of the building, as represented in the images provided. I guess that covers most of the application that I have, and if there's any questions that you have as to...
So I was wondering, how many square feet are in the house that exists now, and how many square feet would be in the house that we want to build?
I might have to defer to the owner on the current house. I'm not sure of the exact square footage, but the new one would be right around 1,500 square feet.
Yeah. Do you know the square footage?
I don't know if I'm down to the figure exactly, but it's...
Identify yourself.
It's 11, my memory is it's 1,120.
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry, George Holling, trustee of the AAAA trust.
And your home is...
204, north, north N-O-R-T-O-N avenue. That's Los Angeles, California, Volker. My memory of the records of the square footage of the house is the house of 1,126, my memory, with a 400 square foot garage, total of 1,526. The current house, we're contemplating will be slightly smaller, 1,500, about a 300-foot garage of about 15, by a lot of paths. So total square footage, all of it. All the construction, the lines we discussed have shown.
And a lot of it is to just replace what's there, but that square footage is driven to by the block coverage calculations as well as the FAR floor area ratio calculations by the city. So all the new concept meets that criteria.
One thing that would be helpful is on these drawings, if you would have the directional arrows on them?
I'm sorry, directional arrows on, yeah. The north is up on that. So first three is at the top of the page, and the alley is to the east.
Anyways, in the future, that would be helpful. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Are there presentations by proponents? Are there any presentations by opponents? Staff response?
I have nothing further, just to make sure that you did get the public comment that was in your...
Say that again.
Just to make sure that you had seen the public comment that was in the...
I have.
I have one letter. I heard Vito said there might be multiples.
Yeah, I just have the...
Okay. So the applicant will add any statements?
Just George Holling again. A neighbor to the west wrote the email that's in the record. A neighbor to the east wrote me a handwritten note directed just to me and gave me support. I didn't bring her, she was very supportive. So I'll just say, she wanted to give me a hug, and I said, no. So I just, I can represent that was the neighbor across the alley to the east also expressed a handwritten letter of support to that town, my help. So as mentioned, I did make it to the record.
Okay. Okay, if that's the last word from the applicant, then we'll close the public hearing and move on to consideration. Don't everyone speak at once.
Well, I'll jump in. I know we've had a lot of conversations about being very vigilant with any kind of request for variance on the country setbacks, and I think it's important to continue to look at each one on a case-by-case basis, and we've said no to plenty. Some of the things I think that are important to me in this one, was this house was built before our zoning code was put in place. And my hunch here, Jeff, is, excuse me, I'm winning heck with this, that's... My hunch is, if we enforce the code on this small lot, we would effectively be taking away their ability to replace what they have. Is that, is that correct?
It definitely challenges the, you know, giving walkways and stuff in that building.
Yeah. So I really struggle with that. Zoning is put in place after a house is built, effectively, potentially effectively taking away the owner's right to replace what they have, and that fits into some philosophical issues I have with holding the line on granting variances or not granting variances. So with the comments that, you know, both neighbors are in favor of it, maybe the other letter could come in. I'm fine without it, but if it's in condition with several, we have both neighbors on both sides saying we're okay with it. I feel pretty good about this variance.
I'd have to agree. The fact that they have solicited their neighbors' input into the decision and shown them what they are planning on building and have a positive response is of value certainly to the project.
I have a question, though. Isn't the whole point of, you know, bringing a house into conformity if you rebuild it, that always applies pretty much across the board in our experience to houses that were built before the ordinance was put in place? I mean, isn't that usually the scenario? That a house was built before the ordinance is put in place, and then they want to rebuild it out of conformity? And so I, I mean, so why do we even have the ordinance?
But that would be, just to speak to that, that would be that these ordinances were directed at a minimum lot size and those kind of other conditions. That's why we passed zoning ordinances. And so, you know, in other words, we put this, the standard or minimum lot size, 5,000 square feet, then you have these expectations of five-foot side yard setback, 15-foot back, but that's for those conforming lots, right? So this lot is not a conforming lot.
And maybe, Lisa, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Maybe put another way, maybe it's not so much on the ordinance as why we have a process for variance, because there are these unique situations that come up that do need a different look than the way the code was written. So we have these outliers out there that need special consideration.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I just, I just, I just take issue with the idea that this, the ordinances were not written for undersized lots. If that was true, it would say it in the ordinance. That's not how you interpret an ordinance. You just say, well, because we have undersized lots, it obviously doesn't apply to that, and it was only written for standard-sized lots. I don't think that's true. I think that exception would be in the ordinance if that was, was what was contemplated.
Well, I, you know, there's other issues on the table tonight that show exception to our ordinances being perfect. I, you know, it might be something we look at in the future, but, you know, certainly that, that code has plenty of loopholes in it that we can address.
Well, I mean, we seem to be saying that a lot now. Well, it's just a loophole, or we don't have, we don't have that written clearly in our ordinance. I mean, this, the ordinance that's on the books right now is very clear. I don't think there are any problems with it as far as, you know, bringing a house into conformity if you rebuild it. I don't, I don't think that there's anything in that ordinance that is ambiguous or a loophole. I think that the variance process, we are, we are making a loophole. And, and I think that when there is a really clear reason for doing it, because it's really a hardship, but, but that house could be rebuilt. I mean, it would have to be reconfigured, but you could build a house on that lot that was in compliance. It would just take a lot more thought and creativity and thinking of new ways of doing things, but it's, it's possible. So you're not denying someone any, the use of the lot or the ability to build a house on it, just not a house of a certain amount of square feet.
The same square footage, which one circumstance is an effective taking.
No, that's not a taking. You, you're...
At some level, at some level, you're telling the person, you can't put back what you already have based on a new code that was put in after the house was built.
A taking is being denied any, the use of your land or the use of your lot. You're not being denied the use of your lot. You're being denied having what you, what is there right now. Okay? That's not the same thing.
Except, you know, I think Lisa, this is, this is not a replacement of what is there right now. This is an expansion of what is there right now. This is a 400-foot, square foot increase in the size of the house. In other words...
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure that. I think that the information was given as the square footage of the house plus the garage, and then Vito gave the square footage of the total building area. That was my interpretation. I could be wrong about that.
I think it's unclear, because I don't think we, I'm unclear exactly how big the house is right now, including the garage. How many square feet, including the garage is right now? And how many square feet is contemplated, including the garage? Maybe if we had those two numbers side by side, we could, you know, we would see, but I, that does, that's not even the important thing to me. The, I'm just being a stickler for what I see as a, I think that when there's a real hardship or it imposes a condition that's just very difficult, that's one thing, because we've had those happen too, where there was just no other alternatives. I don't see how this fits into that at all.
I'm not arguing with you, Lisa. I'm in full agreement. You know, I think that the issue that would come up against most of these variance cases is that people are wanting to build houses that are too big for the lot, too big to meet the code. And, you know, I think, essentially, we're, we're saying that the city is going to give this lot an extra three feet, basically, out of the alleyway.
Right.
And I don't know, you know, what's there right now is, you know, a really tight fit, partially because of the way the houses are, the nature of the houses that are built there. But I also don't think that there's any taking going on here in terms of the, the land is going to be stripped down, and our house is going to be stripped down to just the lot. And if someone bought that lot, there's nothing that would suggest that they should be able to build a house that didn't fit the code. And so I, I think Lisa's point is, is a good point to consider whenever we have any of these variances. It's my point really. Thanks.
Sheriff, I can weigh in a little bit, and I think it's a good discussion. Something to keep in mind is maybe turning back to the criteria that you're supposed to judge on. What you're considering tonight is not a variance. The other position that talks about variances, and those are typically hard to get. Your code has a different section for setback reductions, and that's in 1764. And I think, for whatever reason, we can talk about what it might be, setback reductions are easier to get than variances. And what they, the criteria that you're actually supposed to apply, I have city right in front of me, and I'm not finding it anymore, is whether or not it's, where are these criteria?
1764.
Oh, I know where it is. Yeah. So it is...
Only buildable coverage shall not exceed 40%. That's one. Two, significant use of the ocean, mountains, or similar features. Nearby properties will not be obstructed any more than when it's over. That's two. Three, proposed building location will not interfere with solar access of the joint property. Four, within the purpose of setbacks, will offer reasonable ground property, drainage, light, or noise reduction. Setback purposes, they grant where planning commission find that the above purposes are maintained, and one or more of the following are achieved by the reduction in the setback. A, true protection, B, protection of neighboring property's use of the ocean, mountains, or natural features, C, managed through tree corridors, Y, hazard topography, D, provision of solar access, E, permitting construction on a lot with unusual configuration, F, rehabilitation of existing buildings where other reasonable permits do not exist, G, protecting a weapon on local, A, permitting construction on oceanfront lot that excessive applications of oceanfront setback. Speaks either.
And the applicant has suggested that it's about permitting construction on a lot with unusual configurations. And the question is whether or not 2,500 feet would be an unusual configuration, and whether those other criteria are met. I think the staff report is fairly clear that those other criteria are met. Contrast that with the various criteria which require finding that literal interpretation of the enforcement result in practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship, that there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances and conditions applicable to those properties, that a grant, and, you know, variance in accordance with exit should not be ordinarily be granted if a special circumstance in which that relies or results in action of the applicant or owner. And so there's two, you know, a setback reduction is similar to variance, but it's not a variance, and you're applying different criteria here. That's helpful.
Well, how about other unreasonable alternatives don't exist? That jumped right out at me. I can't see how there's no other alternatives, that other reasonable alternatives do exist.
Well, in this case, the stairwell is what's responsible for the width of the house. And I wouldn't be nearly so bothered by this proposal if the setback is coming off of the north or the south end of the lot and not the entire length of the house.
So, so one thing I want to point out is that, you know...
Who's talking?
Jeff Adams, sorry.
Who? Oh, I couldn't...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And it says, one or more of the following are achieved by the reduction in setbacks. And so they don't have to meet all A through H. They're just asking for that, you know, under the permitting construction on a lot with unusual configuration. And so they're not having to achieve all of those. F, it's rehabilitation of existing buildings where other reasonable terms do not exist, but they don't have to meet each one of those. And that's not what A mentioned is the one they're trying to achieve, because they're not reasonable.
So, I mean, my, my feeling all along has, has been that when we're rebuilding a house, that, that that's when it triggers a need to comply with the ordinance. And one of the things that I find troubling here was the, the distance between the houses that are in this area. It made me think of when I lived in Portland, up above Portland State, and there were five Victorian houses within three feet of one another. And one caught on fire, and then all of them caught on fire. And that was a kind of the first thing I saw when I looked at this development here. But anyways, that's, that's kind of a history of how I've been thinking about these. So that's all I have to say.
Well, and that's one of, that's also one of the reasons why we have a five-foot setback. And, and that really should end up resulting in 10 feet between two houses.
Well, Joe, if you can convince the city council to change that, that would be great.
Convince them to change smart.
All I'm asking is that when people rebuild houses, they don't try to build houses that are bigger than what's there, and then come and ask the planning commission to give approval to a setback reduction because of the nature of the house they designed. And I think Lisa's point is that it's perfectly possible to build a house on this lot and meet the ordinance. It's not the house that somebody wants to build that's 400 square feet bigger than evidently the one that's there right now.
Okay.
That's going to be torn down.
I just want to clarify that it's not 400 square feet bigger. They're not asking for 400 square foot increase. They're actually asking for a smaller building. And that can be, you know, hey, put it that in the condition, you know.
Who's speaking? Who is that? Who's speaking now? I can't...
Jeff, I don't think she's picking up your...
Yeah, I'm sorry. So Lisa, I'm sorry, this is Jeff Adams again. I'm just saying that it was, it was the applicant that stated it, and I just checked on the GIS website from the assessments office, that they're asking for a smaller building than the one that currently exists.
What's, how big is it? How big is the one that currently exists, including the garage?
According to the GIS, it's 1,575 feet, square feet.
Okay.
Yes. And what they're asking for would be 1,490.
Also, I might, this is Charles, Lisa, might mention that if I remember right, that east siding goes up against an alley, so it's not like there are two houses that are two feet apart.
That's correct.
And, and actually, you know, if you're looking at this five-foot and between the two, you know, they're moving more than already there, but that one is there also, not, you know, not informing it in that setback, the one that's currently there. I think that that's something that should be considered.
So let me, let me ask you, Jeff, why do we have side yard setbacks?
Just like, like I said, the five-yard, five-foot side yard setback is, you know, I know you're, you just spoke that you don't believe that it's written for a conforming lot, but that is how, that's how it's written. Does not mean that we don't want everything to be five-foot in an R1 or an R2 zone, but if a lot is already priorly, prior-platted and it's a non-conformity and was built, that's why you have these special setback reduction and variance rules. Take those for those kinds of conditions. And like I said, if at building permit, fire, they need to raise that fire protection, the building code, I mean, the building official will require them to do that.
And, and the, and the, I can't remember if it's 50% or 75% rule now, but since they're rebuilding the house completely, right?
Right, yes.
And they're, and so it's, it's greater than 50 or 75%? And isn't the rule that it's supposed to come into conformity if you're, if you're redoing a house at a percentage greater than that?
It is, and that's how they're here asking for this special setback reduction. So they expand that a little bit, since they have some room to put it within.
A little bit? It's not a little bit, Jeff. It's five feet, and they want to have it two feet. So that's more than half. How is that a little bit? That's more than 50%. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, I, I'm not understanding where you're coming from at all.
Barbara?
Is it possible to approve it with the condition that we get the second letter? I, I feel a little uneasy having one neighbor say it's okay, but no evidence of the second neighbor. So is it part of the...
You can... Yep.
Typically, that's a difficult one to do, because then you give a neighbor essentially leverage to, to, you know, say no or extract other things. In this case, it's, the applicant has indicated they already have that letter, and so that...
But Bill, couldn't, couldn't you continue the meeting until you receive that and then make a decision at that next...
Sure.
And it's not a matter of structure or anything, it's just...
Right. You would like to have it in your record.
Yeah. This is a very tight knit area.
So...
Someone could make the motion to continue the...
Yeah.
To that...
Right.
I'll make the motion and continue the meeting.
Okay.
To what day?
To the...
To what day?
Do I say it first?
Okay. This issue will be continued to next month?
We...
What's that?
Do we need a second and fourth?
No, no, continuation, we'd...
Okay.
Just to clarify, with the expectation that the record will be left open in the meantime, what public hearing, oral testimony at that hearing, or is it just documents in the interim?
Well, I, I think with the... Well, I, I think with the response that we've had tonight, I'd be open to both, but definitely the written response in there, but.
And I'd like to see some more clarification.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Hold on, Lisa. So no, I'm just saying we're continuing the issue until next month and we would run it as though we're running it tonight. Okay, let.
I'd like to see.
Lisa?
I'd like to see some clarification of what is on the property right now as far as square footage and what, you know, not, not a GIS report, but the person who, you know, whose house it is, what's there.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I think we were getting close to it, but not precisely the square footage. So we'll be asking the applicant to do that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right, then that issue is continued to next month. So next we have the work session items. And Jeff, I assume you want to.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll. I know that you guys wanted really two things when you, at the last, the previous meeting or possibly the one before, I can't remember. So I would ask, you know, to put together some language because I thought that what I had heard, that you wanted at least the kind of the minor changes, the small changes, and wanted to get those through. But there was also, Commissioner Kerr's request that maybe we look at unit size and other things as part of this. And so I, I wanted to just kind of briefly walk through kind of the minor changes and then we can talk about what is this, what you guys are wanting included in this, okay? And that's not to say we have to put everything in one, but as I've mentioned before, when we go through Oregon land use, the, all the notification that you have to do is part of the land use state requirement and everything. It's best to get what we can in one so that when we do all the notification and go through the notice period, we can have as much notice as possible. So if you, we'll start on page two. I've done a slight modification of the accessory dwelling, of what it should, that, that language contains living, kitchen, restroom areas, which is really just kind of carrying it forward from other parts of the code. Then there's some kind of what I like to call, I don't, I don't understand what with or without a common wall or ceiling in the duplex or two-family really means if you're saying with or without, or both. So I corrected that. And then under the accessory uses, the structure of buildings may be constructed only in conjunction with or after the construction of the primary buildings on the site. And then further ones, I've inserted that because of kind of the vagary of whether an accessory has to, you know, can't be on a lot first. And so then the accessory dwelling, we've had some issues and this is where we start thinking about, is this all that we want to change or do we want to open this up to other things? Because I can tell you right now, a lot of our garages are over that, over say that 600 square foot limit, because if you think about it, for a two-car garage, it's usually going to be at least around 20 feet by at least 20, usually about 20, 24, okay? And so some garages are a bit larger than that, that kind of 600 square foot. And especially because the language doesn't say whether the garage in the landing and all that other stuff is included in the calculation for accessory dwelling. So right now, we limit accessory dwellings to 600 square feet. What I propose is through a conditional use permit, that you might, under certain conditions, allow larger than that, because we have a lot of older homes and a lot of people that have come forward and they want to be able to, you know, expand, say a downstairs or a portion of the garage or above the garage into an accessory dwelling, but they're not, they're not able to unless they block off portions or rooms or things because it exceeds the 600 square feet. And, you know, I, I think it comes to kind of a policy decision by you guys. And I, so I wanted to bring this forward because I get this question all, all the time. And, you know, even people saying, you know, well, we've been renting for years, this area and you're, and, or, you know, we'd like to turn this into an accessory dwelling unit for a long-term rental, but we can't do it because it's over 600 square feet with that. So I have put, made this under page seven there. You'll see on page seven, I made this kind of larger accessory dwelling units under conditional use, that they would have to, the conversion to an accessory dwelling unit does not add more than 600 square feet of newly constructed habitable space so that someone could add a little bit larger unit. The accessory dwelling unit provides a separate exterior entry or fire-related shared entry vestibule. C, where an accessory dwelling has been converted over or adjacent to a garage, you must meet all fire safety building requirements. And D, accessory dwelling unit meets other requirements in other accessory dwelling language. So I, I've, I've put this language in just because of that, a lot of what I, I hear. And let's see. The other, the thing that's impacted is at the bottom of five, top of six, short-term rentals. I've clarified that a lot of people will not see, and this is also a second point to discuss, is that, you know, in a lot of jurisdictions, a single room or a few rooms in a home can be used as a short-term rental. And so we have never allowed that. And so I, that's why that portion of a dwelling unit, I put that in there because I don't think it's that clear. It's, we've gone by the language that we have, but it's not something that I can usually just point to in our code and say, this is, this is why we don't do that. And so then I've also clarified that, I think Commissioner Kerr brought up about the 10-person before occupancies and saying, we, the fifth, 10, 10 are over and some of these historic ones that we have, or we must require that they have these fire safety code requirements. Then, like I said, one of the other questions that we often get, and it's not clearly stated in our code, is are short-term rentals allowed in the primary structures while the accessory dwelling can be used as the long-term rental or the long, you know, for the vein lift? We've never, it's not clearly addressed in our language. And so that's kind of a second policy point that I would like to run by you guys, if we should have language that speaks to that, at least we can clarify that moving forward. Because right now, we have not traditionally, or I have not traditionally allowed that. But I did ask that question. And yet, if I'm in an R2 building history and with our language on duplexes, which I've also run by you, you know how vague that language is, is that, you know, what is the difference between an accessory dwelling and an R2 district or a duplex? There is no really difference within our language. Does that make sense to you guys?
Yeah.
So I would like that clarified is what I'm getting. And so those were the, those were the main, just the minor things. And then Commissioner Kerr brought up at that, at that previous hearing about total unit size period of limiting unit sizes. And there's quite, you know, there's quite a lot we can get into with that. And so I didn't know if you wanted to take that step with this change and with these ordinance changes, or do you want to just do these minor ones, these clarifying kind of things as an ordinance and then get into this other in the future? So that's my setup, what I wanted to hear from you guys.
Well, I think the last point you made is it, it seems to be a pretty important point to come up time and time again, unless it's to the size of structures. So we probably shouldn't make that, I mean, from my opinion, we should make that part of this, we want to have it one and done.
I mean, the thing that, the thing that bothers me about the accessory units is, and what you were talking about, having a garage and then having a living space on top, it's, it's like, okay, you're developing a duplex or you're developing another space. And that's, that's where I, I differ. I mean, I can understand garage sizes being what, what they are in order to get two cars in there, but, but having the dual purpose of having another living unit in the upstairs of the, of the garage, it's like you're really developing another house there.
Jeff, do you feel the way the code is currently written, there is enough clarity to, are there enough points, this is called check marks, that when someone has, I'll just wing it here, a stove, a bathroom, whatever, that defines on us in the code to go from accessory, a habitable unit versus, does that need some sharpening or do you feel like you have the tools within the code to address that sort of, the crossover?
Right, because, you know, I would, I think that the habitable space could be clearer. I think we need a better clarification on that. I didn't approach that with this one because I think it is part of that unit size larger conversation of what else you want to do.
We should probably definitely address that one.
Yeah.
Well, if you're looking at some of the older homes and they may have a basement or something, that is certainly, could potentially be over the 600 feet that you have stated in here. And when you consider that you're trying to make flexible housing for different types of families and different stuff, you can't exactly go downstairs or upstairs, wherever, and close off two or three rooms.
Right.
I mean, it takes out a potential of renting to someone who might want to live or work here in Cannon Beach and maybe they have a family. And so I think we have to allow for a varying size, partially with the original structure in conjunction to the, what, who we're trying to attract or who we're trying to have stay in our units or provide housing that work in the community.
That's what I'm trying to do with that larger language. And I kept it as a conditional use, so you still, it would still have to come before you guys to get it approved.
So I was.
This is just for long-term dwelling?
Right, exactly, yeah. And, and Lisa, that's a good point. We would put that, that could be one of the conditions as well, you know, it should be, you know, one of the, one to add to.
But I just hate to see you totally limit the square footage because I think you're, houses that come in all different square feet that are already existing.
Right.
And you need to be able to accommodate the full space and to close off a wall and say, no one goes in that room for the next 15 years. It's kind of crazy.
And administratively, it doesn't work either. I mean, so you may have one or two rooms on the west wall, somebody's going to have to come and enter from the exterior, I mean, doesn't, you know, how do you do that?
No, and how do you provide the stairwell or the entranceway or walkway and not be in the right of way?
Yeah.
Well, you know, the 600 square foot rule on accessory dwellings that exists now, if it's, if it's above a garage, that's, you know, 20 by 30 foot garage, you know, it's a good double, double garage size. And I think that the reason why you have a 600 foot limitation on accessory dwellings is simply so that you don't have every square foot of a lot stuffed with house or, or every house, you know, built basically to be a duplex. And, you know, and frankly, you can, you can put together a very nice one-bedroom apartment over a 20 by 24 or so sized garage. You know, I, I think that there's some value to having that limitation on an accessory dwelling on one lot.
I was talking more of a pre-existing home.
Pardon me?
I was thinking more in relationship to a pre-existing home that may have attic space or basement space that they chose to turn into a long-term rental. It's hard to change the size of it because it exists with the size of the home that's already there. So to limit it to 600 feet seems to me, doesn't kind of fit the plan of allowing different housing stock for different sized families.
So that's, so that's why.
The housing stock is already there, you know, and someone might be trying to create a different type of living arrangement, but the structure of the house is there before they redo it into an accessory, you know, accessory dwelling that's part of the original house. You know, I, I think there's some value to restricting the overall size of these houses. And 600 square feet is a lot of, a lot of apartment.
Well, what if there was, like, if you had a, a conditional, you'd have, if you'd have to come to the planning commission if you wanted to have it bigger and have spec, certain conditions met to make it bigger? In other words, let's say it's your basement and you want to rent out your basement, like was just said, you know?
You know, if you're in the business of renting out a house or an accessory dwelling, it seems to me that you could use an extra bit of space just for storage of maintenance materials and, and so forth. You know, you, there's nothing that says that you can't have space that's not habitable space and that is not functional.
It can still be functional, right?
Yeah, yeah, it still can be used for, you know, storage of tools and, you know, and such. But I just, I think that the idea of, you know, if I were presented before I built here with the opportunity to build an apartment as an accessory dwelling of 800 feet, I would have done it. Why not? Wouldn't cost me much money to do it. And all of a sudden, you've got more and more heavy use of, in some ways, smaller and smaller pieces of land, you know? And I, I think that that 600 square foot was, you know, it seems restrictive, but you can get a one-bedroom and maybe a studio in, into that square footage with a small kitchen and bath and laundry and stuff like that. So I just, I think there are some, there are some values to, to the way the city looks when you, when you restrict the overall size of houses. And I, I've thought that the city's code has been pretty effective actually, or pretty balanced between people who want to build, you know, McMansions and people who, you know, want to build summer cabins or vacation, vacation housing. And I, I think we ought to be real careful about trying to figure out ways to. And I think we ought to be real careful about trying to figure out ways to, you know, provide yet more housing in Cannon Beach on a given lot. There's enough of that since all you have.
Ross, I see a point.
Joe and Lisa, we have a phone, we have a phone caller that wants to speak.
Okay.
Jane? Okay.
Mr. I think that she is going to do a report, a sound planning tree report or something, so we want.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know if she wants to speak on this item, she can speak, but she's not on you.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, we'll continue, yeah. She's, she's on the last agenda item. So anyways, we can continue this. What I wanted to address was on the top of page two, when you're talking about the chapters here, you have listed 74 bed and breakfasts, is that?
Where did that come from?
At the top of page two, before you get into definition, you have 54 accessory.
Oh, that's, that's a chapter of the code, sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So I also have a question on page two. How do you define what a restroom area?
My, you have the fixtures, so, you know, toilet, I think, and I think, I think it's the, oh, no, B and B, or an ability, yeah.
Okay.
So on the, on the B and B, I think under C, it would probably be clear if it has, in addition to required parking for the residents, one off-street parking space for each bedroom, bed and breakfast room shall be provided. I think it'd be better if you just put that, if you have one bedroom, you need one off-street parking. If you have two bedrooms, yeah. Any, any other comments? So then, under occupancy and parking on page six, you have bedrooms, one bedroom, maximum occupancy is six. And then you have two bedrooms, and maximum occupancy is six. So that doesn't really make much sense to me. The number of maximum occupancy doesn't seem to be consistent with the number of bedrooms that are there.
Well, as you can see, if you can see, you have the four bedrooms, four and five, they also have the four in the off-street parking. So, you know, it's, it's never, it's not, not a steady progression.
Yeah, no, no, I'm thinking, I'm thinking not too much of the off-street parking in that situation as the number of occupancies that can be in there. It doesn't, I, if you have five bedrooms, you could have 12 people there. Well, it seems to me if you had five bedrooms, you could have more than five people there. But anyways, yeah, it just kind of stood out to me.
So could you have four people in one bedroom? I thought, I mean, I grew up in a big family, but we never had.
Right, I mean, that would make more sense to me.
Yeah, I thought so.
I can't, are you saying one bedroom, four people makes more sense? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Sounds like a group grope to me.
I didn't hear that, Joe.
I said, it sounds like a group grope to me, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we allow that here.
I know, I'm sure.
More the merrier.
I knew it, I knew I could bring you down my level.
Okay, do we want to continue this discussion on this, or are we complete it for now?
I saw something I didn't see earlier. And it's just maybe in the context of this presentation there, but back to page two, there's a definition of accessory dwell. And in the last sentence, you know, you've got the contained living, kitchen, restroom areas, and then and which is rented only for periods of 30 calendar days or more. So again, this is just in the context of rental units, or is this a definition across the code for such a long?
Yeah.
Well, what if it's not rented?
I mean, if somebody wants them to just.
Well, there's living.
Live there, where. But we have, as soon as it has that kitchen, yes, we consider that accessory dwelling unit, and so.
So the kitchen is key on the accessory dwelling?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, and that's the argument.
And where is kitchen defined? I'm sorry, I didn't have internet until late this afternoon for a week, so I'm really trying to catch up here. And where, where is a kitchen defined?
So it's on page three, under kitchen?
I'm doing this online, and I, and I, there's no page number, so.
Oh, okay.
Lisa, I'll read it to you, I'll read it to you, okay?
Okay.
Kitchen means, kitchen means a room or portion of a room which is designed, intended, or used for food preparation or cooking.
So, that means, that means a camp stove and a small refrigerator could be a kitchen? Well.
Yeah.
Microwave, or.
That, I don't know if I'd agree with that design. I mean, you could put a camp stove on the floor and a refrigerator next to it.
Yeah, we usually go by the stove or the cooking unit. That's, that's when we consider that a kitchen.
Okay, so, but I mean, like a two-burner, what do you call them? You know, the ones with the tubes that you put in? Huh?
A hot plate, sort of the two-burner hot plate?
Two-burner hot plate you can cook on, you can. So that makes it a kitchen.
I can cook with a Bunsen burner.
Mm-hmm, yeah. You can also.
It would have, it would have to be on.
Huh?
Yeah, it would, it would be on the plans or the permit, you know? So if it's got that stove or the cooking facility, then we consider that a kitchen.
Anyway.
And that gives us that kind of, like you said, the leverage that if we see somebody with a hot plate in a garage, we will, that's a violation.
Okay.
What if you're just storing a hot plate in the garage?
Yeah.
You got, you got to park your vehicle outside.
So would you guys like me to bring back more at the next meeting or work session with, where we talk about unit size and with including?
I would like that, I would, yeah.
I'll clarify some of what we've talked about tonight, bring back unit size in different ways to talk, to address that, okay?
Okay. All right.
Do you mean, I think it's.
No, no, that's on the next, that's after the Nicholson.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, then we're going to wrap up the work session for tonight. If nobody else has any additional statements. Okay. We're going to move on to ongoing planning items. The next one is the Nicholson Planning Development Living Wall Monitoring Report.
Right?
Jeff, go ahead.
I drafted up a memo here, a monitoring report is what I call it, and with some attachments and aid attachments, and that's what's before it. I don't know if you just, you want me to read this into the record, just kind of discuss what I, is that okay?
Yeah, just discuss, yeah.
Yeah, so what I, how I approached this was that, you know, from what I heard at your request was to look at this as it meets kind of the conditions that were set and what was approved. And so I looked back at the record, and, you know, the findings are there, I put attachment one in there, and it describes the shared access, the common area with the living wall. And the findings that, you know, go into quite a few things, but one of the things that it discusses is this shared access and maintenance agreement. And it's a very limited language of what it says about the living wall and, you know, how it's supposed to be maintained. So I put the history here as paragraph two, the usual uses of approval, required applicants to install the wall, add show in documents committed by the applicant. Okay, so with conditions required, applicant provides for maintenance of the vegetation of the wall as part of a shared access and maintenance agreement. And so I put that condition number two there for you to see what we're kind of tied to. So the plans that were actually committed and put into the record on this were 102 three-gallon creeping mahogany and 96 three-gallon Zalal, Zalal, is that how you say it?
Yes.
Yeah. And along with an irrigation system for water and plants, right, yeah? And paragraph 5.4 of that agreement stated maintenance of vegetation on the living wall. It's plantable, living wall portion of the retained washes and maintain with living plants. It doesn't go into any other details, that's all that it says. And so it didn't specify any required monitoring program. You know, if you look at our doom grading and anything like that, you know, you'll have a monitoring report and gives you a timeframe for doing that monitoring and the like. Conditions of approval that for any building permits for retaining wall are issued, applicant shall provide an executed contract with a landscape professional for the installation and maintenance of the wall, including a timeline and enforcement statement. And I provided the contract between Jeff Nicholson and Vasquez Yards and Tree Works in the documentation, and it's signed November 12, 2016, and it specified completion of the plantings 12 months after that. So after the approval, building permits for the same wall, city had a series of email correspondence between the property owner and Mark Barnes regarding not living up the agreement. And so a co-enforcement order was issued by Bill and to Mr. Nicholson, and quoting the obligations for him to approve that, and so they did that. And then in my monitoring report, I went out on the site, contacted the Hardings to access the property and to walk the site, take pictures. They supplied me with the plant list that's currently there. I verified that as I walked the site, and pretty much in agreement with what they had provided me. It's a different plant list than the two that were specified in the original plan, but I have no documentation or record that, you know, why it was done or what the changes were for, but the plantings are, it's a north-facing, mainly north-facing wall, and, you know, it's not the best place to plant, but I think the plants are in pretty good condition. They're establishing themselves. They may not be the correct mix or what the mix was agreed to at the beginning, and maybe that's part of what you discuss is, you know, is this up to the standard you're at, and does it need to be supplemented or away? But when I came to recommendations, you know, I considered the condition of sin, what it was trying to achieve, and what we have in agreement on. And, you know, I could not see a point of going in and asking to remove everything and replanting. I think that then your three to five years are best out on re-establishing. So, you know, if there's grounds between the two, then it's to supplement what's there or condition, a different type of planting, if that's what you're looking for. But what I recommended was planning staff would continue to monitor the site annually with a planting audit of each of the planning cells and docking on those for at least three more seasons. And if the wall continues to show successful trajectory, city can downgrade its monitoring status after that. So, you know, that's what I understood of what you all were after, and we have to answer the questions regarding that.
Jeff, have you ever seen a living wall? Do you know what they look like when you're done?
Yes, I have, yeah.
Okay. What the whole point of a living wall is, is the wall is green. The whole wall is green. That's what the, that was the bill of goods that the planning commission was sold, and we still rejected it. And then that was the bill of goods that the, that the council was sold, and they, they thought, okay, a green wall. I, I don't know what you're seeing when you go out there, but what I'm seeing is scraggly ferns, salal grows, you don't even have to plant it, it's all over the place. So I just, how you can even say that that looks like a living wall to you? What it looks like is a, is a bunch of pockets that stuff just grew in. It does not, all that stuff that's in there is scraggly, it is not a living wall. It is not what the bill of goods that was sold to the council is. It's not a green wall. It looks like, and pardon my language, but it looks like crap. And I just can't even, I mean, it's a con job. That living wall is a con job. And, well, I have a statement I'd like to read into the record. Can I do it now on this issue?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I know that there's lots of important and critical issues happening right now in the city, and this seems very inconsequential compared to all those other issues. But it isn't, because I think it's really important not to sweep this under the carpet because it sets a really dangerous precedent. It says that if you are obstreperous, and you just do what you want, and you persevere in doing what you want, and, and, you know, just don't, don't pay attention to your own promises or your own contracts or to the ordinances, you can get away with what you want. And I think even though it's a minor issue about a wall, I think it's symbolic. You know, it's that old thing that they always talk about, the slippery slope, and this is exactly what this is. It's you can get away with this kind of thing, and then the next person can get away with it, and it just sets, it's, it's, it's a violation of good faith. And we have enough of that kind of thing going on right now in our federal government. We don't need to do that in our little town, too. We should demand that they, that they meet their obligation and their promise and do what they said they were going to do. I just think that it's unethical, and I don't think we should permit it.
So Lisa, I, the thing that comes to mind when I look at this project after four years is that when you are driving up from the north side going up the hill, you basically are, half of the view that you're looking at is concrete.
Right.
And it's not green wall. And to get to the, to the, to the root of the problem is, they, I don't know who the professional person was to select the plant material, but they did not select the right plant material from the very beginning.
I have to go.
And I doubt that with, I said, I said they didn't select the right plant material from the beginning. If you wanted to have a green wall covering the concrete, they could have used any number of other plants that would have done a better job. And to think that the cyclone fence at the top of the drive space is going to be, going to be a living wall with clematis is ridiculous because clematis dies down to the ground in the winter time. So that's, that's my big problem with, with this whole project, was it was never, it was never thought out by a true professional landscaper. it was never thought out by a true professional landscaper and it wasn't maintained when they planted it, so it's still struggling in various parts. Of course, you can go in there with a camera and look down the side of the wall because there's enough green there, it looks like it's all covered. But if you drive up going south up the hill, what you're seeing today after four years is half concrete and half of, uh, uh, sword fern, salal. So that's, to me, where the, the, the big root of the problem was from the beginning.
It, it looks to me like they just dug up what was on the lot and shoved it in there. This salal and ferns. I mean, because those things grow, they grow, they grow on the lot anyway. I mean, there's, there's, no, no, believe me, I can't imagine one landscaper who would put their name on that wall, who would say, yeah, I'm the one who designed it. Come on. It's more than 50% of the wall that shows when you drive. I drive that route all the time and it's, it's more than 50% of concrete. And then that's not even the issue. The issue is letting somebody, you know, letting, letting this go to me is a way bigger issue than just the wall. And, and I have a question for, for Jeff. Can, Jeff, can I just ask you a question? We, we got a letter, we, we got a letter from, um, Jeff, Jeff and Jennifer Harrison. Did, did you get that letter?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'd like you to tell me on the first and, and second page, one, there's one, two, three, oh, well, I got, yeah. And then under three, it goes from A to J. Is any of that, is anything on that letter not true?
Lisa, I'm not reading. That is not about the living wall.
Well, there's part in it, okay, we'll come back to that then. There is a section about the living wall, though. There, there actually is, but we, nothing that hasn't been said. No, that's number four that is the living wall. Number four, sorry. The 125 feet industrial looking concrete abomination referred to as living wall. Is, is anything, you, you don't see that as being number four representing what is?
Well, you know, I, I don't understand what your question is. Am I agreeing or am I supposed to answer if?
I'm asking if there's anything that's not true about what was said in the letter.
I guess, uh, about a characteristic of a village. I agree, yeah. I, I, I would agree with that.
That it is, that it isn't the characteristic of a village.
I guess that depends on what you consider village.
Well, usually I don't consider a village a prison wall or, or a, an underpass wall on a freeway built in the 60s.
Can I ask a fellow question? So Bill, in the, in the operations, uh, the shared access and maintenance agreement, section five talks about maintenance responsibilities. And the city of Cannon Beach is named as a benefit, benefited part of it. Yeah. So as I read through those, uh, situations, which just went earlier, it's not specific as what was presented to the council when this was approved. How, how do you typically approach a situation where you have broad language like we do in this access agreement and promises made for the approval? When you have both the approval and then ongoing maintenance? It seems like that's at the crux of our challenge here is it hasn't been maintained, it wasn't built, it wasn't, it doesn't appear to have been built to the standards suggested. What's, what are our, what are our enforcement actions? What, what's our?
So in terms of inserting, you know, ultimately this is a contract and there's a implied reasonableness, reasonableness into a contract. And, you know, the, the question, if we were to enforce and go to code enforcement and go to a circuit court judge, we'd have to say their actions in, in maintaining this, it's not to a reasonable level. You know, the question of the promises and other things that came during the approval process is an interesting one that I haven't dealt with before because typically when you enter into a contract, that becomes the document and, you know, the question of, you know, is there some ambiguity and when you can go back? There's something known, and I don't practice contract law, so I'm not as solid on this as pro evidence rule, that the idea is when you and I enter into a contract, we have all these discussions about various things, but ultimately what governs is what's in the document itself. Sometimes you can go back and look at those documents, get some idea of the context and what it means. But if I had to guess, if we were going to go to court and enforce it, what we'd have to do is convince the judge that they are not reasonably maintaining the, the living wall portion with living plants.
Okay. And support that with, with, with the tapes of what was, of Nicholson standing up there and promising certain things and questions that were asked of him and his assurances, that would be the support for your position if you were to take him to court, if, if, to enforce the contract. See, I mean, it's not the four corners of the contract, it's also the sort of legislative history of it behind it that matters. And, and that, all those promises that he made and all the things that he said would be part of the discussion.
And I'm, that's where I'm not certain because, you know, that is oral discussions that happened before the contract got entered, entered into. And, you know, this, how much you can get into it as saying this is the necessary context that you must look at to understand what's reasonable, what isn't? And how much judges say, no, I'm looking at the four corners and, you know, these various discussions that are made beforehand, it doesn't matter what happens is what's in the contract. And, you know, as I said, this is not an area of contract law, I have to look into that a little further to figure out exactly what that means. But generally a judge is going to look at this as, are they reasonably doing it? Could they be informed by the context of this, this discussion that happened before the planning commission? Possibly.
So, you know, I've, and I don't know if it makes sense, but it seems like what's been planted, um, is he, again, I wasn't involved in this enough to know, but it seems like there must have been some, well, one would hope there was some logic between the plant selected and covering those walls. More to your point, Lisa, looking maybe more like a, 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 a living wall. I looked up the definition of one of the, um, one of the plants on the landscaper's bed and it grows to, you know, climbs to 15 feet. I think that's that plant you often see in floral arrangements. So if you have that and it's going downward, you know, that'd be better than a two and a half foot fern. So it seems like we have a couple pieces here. We have the type of plant being put in and the maintenance. And so then we, then we go to, well, you know, what's, what's, um, reasonable? Is it reasonable to expect that they would have maintained it? Is it reasonable to expect that they would have used what was in the original plan? And that, those both seem to me to be reasonable requests. So if we're trying to get to some sort of solution to this, it would be to go maybe back to more of what was originally asked for. Uh, these creeping mahonia and this, uh, and the three gallon salal, I could be focused.
Not just what they found on the property and dug up and shoved in there. That's what's in there. No landscaper put that in. At least not, not on with the license, anyway.
I think we then get to, um, a summary that Dean Hardy provided of, of what was planted. Um, maybe, maybe, you know, as a part of what we suggest, and Jeff, you said you verified that these numbers were correct in terms of what was planted. They're about close enough.
Oh, yeah, they're, you know. And like you said, there is a difference between the 102 creeping mahonia and 96 salal, uh, and then what was planned.
Yeah. So, and, and Bill, tell me if this seems unreasonable. Short of having, um, some sort of support for this was planted, it died, it's not going to make it there, we're going to say, we could say, plant this, show us you gave it a good shot to make it work, you know, I don't know, water build or something. If that doesn't work, we can talk about something else. But short of not having any kind of documentation for this having been done, all we can do is resort back to what was, we were originally hoping. Does that, does that compare? Would be done out there? Because otherwise we really don't have any support for that that was done. We know that there are some ferns out there planted, um, and, uh, I'm sorry, this.
Oh, I mean, they look volunteered to me. I mean, I just can't imagine that any landscaper with a license would put his name to that, those plantings. Those kind of plantings don't make a living wall. I mean, I've seen lots of living walls, they're, they're beautiful and we're green here. We have a lot of plants growing, a lot of native plants, so there really is no excuse for that, for that not to look like a living wall. There really isn't. The way stuff grows, it should work. If there was any effort put into it, any maintenance, any even, any effort at all.
If, if, if the plants that were specified in the original plan were used, would you feel better about its potential to become a, a, a living wall?
Well, I, I would trust somebody who knows plants better. I mean, I know plants, but I'm not a landscape architect. And I, you know, I would trust somebody to, to come up with plants. And I assume that the one that was suggested was one that would grow and cover a wall. Is that, I, I don't know. I mean, is that, uh, there's people on the plant.
My, my, there were two suggested and my assumption is that, that there was some thought, but it's hard to say. I don't think that there was some thought put into those creating a living wall.
So Bill.
Right.
So Bill, if, at this point, if, uh, the plants aren't doing what they should be doing, can we say, um, here are plants that I would recommend planting?
Yeah.
Instead, because huckleberry is more of an upright plant, it would cover that space and it can grow in shade like that. There are several other plants, the native plants are even, um, hybrid varieties that would do well, but can we interject that?
And so, you know, this gets back to what's the planning commission's authority here? And, you know, if you look at the city's code, we've got to investigate and make, make recommendations regarding the implementation of the comprehensive plan. And that's, that's what, you know, you asked Jeff to come back and say, how is this being worked? And so you have the authority to make a recommendation, um, you know, recommend the staff to, for the code enforcement, recommend to the property owner to, you know, follow the plant or to include these additional plants to, you know, make a, or make a recommendation to the city council to take some action. So, you know, that's, I, it, that's where you're, what you can do, so a recommendation would be.
Yeah. So Lisa, Lisa, that, that gives me some encouragement about if we were going to solve this problem is if we could select plants that, uh, would perform better in that location, uh, especially with the ones that they have there, they, um, they're only going to be so tall, they're not going to get taller and taller. I just threw out the huckleberry because I'm, I'm quite fond of it, but it's more of an upright and it's spreading. And I think that, uh, a, a, a look at different selections of plant material would cover that wall, but what's there now is never going to achieve what I think we're after.
Right. So do we make a recommendation that to, to the, um, to the city to ask them to fulfill their, their mandate to make a, or their contract to make a living wall to a real one? Or do we ask the council to do it? Or what recommend the council does it? Who do we do it to? What do you think is the best way to go forward? To get what we want, to achieve what we want, what would be the, the, the most expedient, expedient way to get it done?
I would say that, Lisa, this is Jeff, I, I would say, yeah, you make that recommendation to, uh, city council because I have no budget to do anything and, uh, and, and do this kind of work. So you're the ones who are going to make that decision.
Okay.
I think that's the direction we should go.
I agree.
That's the direction we should go.
Making a request to the city council.
City council to establish a living wall that was specified in the contract.
Because it was the city council to be in with. Okay.
Hold on. Play.
I was just suggesting in addition to that, has a provision for maintenance.
Okay.
And monitor.
Monitor, yeah, maintenance and monitor.
Okay, so it looks like what we want to do is recommend to city council, um, some recommendations of plant materials that would work well, um, that they would maintain it and that we would monitor, uh, uh, the progress on that.
Would you guys like me to draft something up, bring it back to you at the next hearing or how do you all like to do that?
That would be great. Let's do it then.
That'd be great. And, and I would, I would throw in suggestions of plant materials.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll give it.
Yeah. Okay, uh, any, any further discussion on this?
In terms of plant materials, maybe it would be useful to contact the, um, state of Oregon, Department of Roads or whatever, uh, and see, or city of Portland, and see what they use to turn concrete into living wall, 26 going into Portland, because those walls get covered pretty well.
So obviously, I was a maintenance worker on, on part of that area years and years ago, and a lot of what we see there is the, is the deciduous ivory, ivy that, uh, that grows up and turns beautiful color in the fall. And of course they're, but they're, they're, the, the point of the walls going into Portland is to plant trees, not to cover the, the wall per se, but some of the vines that grow up do that. But in this case, we really want to select plant material that will grow up and cover the concrete. So, um, so that's, I mean, that's, that's the direction I think we should be looking at.
Well, this, it seems to me that it's, it's, in terms of covering a wall like that, uh, plants that grow down rather than up have some advantages. And may, and, you know, I, I think you have to be careful with what kind of vines you use, but, but, uh, I, I think that.
Well, I, I mean, my.
Something like huckleberry or salal is, is capable of growing pretty tall. And if, if there, I don't, I don't know how much soil they require. Huckleberries are pretty tough, but, um, I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not the person to recommend plants.
Well, I, I, the, the, the problem with, with this wall is the pockets of soil limit of what you can plant in there.
Exactly.
Or. Where, where if you're going on, uh, in Portland, if you're going, the right of ways that cover the concrete walls that hold that up, in most cases, what's covering it up are trees that were planted, evergreen trees that were planted there and they grow up and, and it's covered. But in this case, and, and so obviously the root system for those kind of plants have, have the soil, the, the topsoil and below to grow in, but in this case, um, you're cut off for that because you're planting in a container. So that's, that's going to be. What's that?
So we're going to talk petunias?
Oh, I, I, that wouldn't, that would not be on my list.
Well, weren't they going to hire, I mean, the whole idea was they were supposed to contract with a landscape person to do it?
Right.
Well, that was what I understood.
Someone who was licensed, not just, you know, not just somebody who said, yeah, let's throw some ferns in there, you know? I mean, some, a licensed landscaper, I don't think that ever happened.
Right.
So.
Kind of contract that it did.
Yeah. Well, I. Well, I, I think we should move on. We will make these recommendations to city council and, uh, take it from there.
Okay.
Okay, um, the last item on the ongoing planning commission is the heritage tree
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Can you, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Well, you can hear, okay. So I have a letter that I will read from our. So I have a letter that I will read from our Cannon Beach Friends of the Trees group regarding this issue.
Okay.
Okay. Dear Cannon Beach Planning Commissioners, first, thank you all for listening to us today. Thanks also to city planner Jeff Adams for helping us with suggestions and to his assistant Jill Janicek for preparing your packets for this brief presentation. Cannon Beach Friends of the Trees has been working toward one of our project goals, which is locating and monitoring the already established special trees in Cannon Beach and encouraging the public to nominate more trees for heritage or significant tree status recognition and protection. As you know, thanks to the work of Barb Knopp and the Cannon Beach Parks and Community Services Committee, which is our Cannon Beach Tree Board, city staff, the city arborist, Cannon Beach Friends of the Trees volunteers, and others, Cannon Beach is once again designated as a Tree City USA community. The Cannon Beach Heritage and Significant Trees Program would serve to further educational, recreational, and environmental preservation purposes while at the same time enhancing the overall aesthetic values of our community. Mayor Sam has expressed his support for this project and shared with us his desire also for a map of our Cannon Beach special trees. We've included, thus included in your packets, a copy of the Lake Oswego Heritage Trees map as a possible example for Cannon Beach to follow. Heritage trees are those which are significantly large in height, diameter, or both, are significantly old, are located in a specific, specific area, are of a unique or rare species, are of a particular horticultural interest, and/or have a documented history. Significant trees, such as ones like the old, sadly now gone Cannon Beach wedding tree, could be a part of the program as well. Their inclusion might be a way to stimulate even more community excitement and participation. As you have seen, we've already had letters of support for the Cannon Beach Heritage and Significant Trees Program from the Cannon Beach Garden Club and the Acola Creek Awareness Project. It is our hope that as this process moves forward, even more groups and individuals will offer their support and assistance. We're looking for your guidance and suggestions for establishing specific criteria and a public nomination process for this city program within the coming year, if possible. We're also hoping to bring this to the Cannon Beach Parks and Community Services Committee next month or as soon as possible. Please note, it is our understanding that trees in Cannon Beach, which currently have some special protection and which are thus required to be pruned in conformance with the International Society of Arboriculture, or ISA, pruning standards, and which have been referred to in years past at city meetings as Cannon Beach Heritage Trees, are those which are, one, more than 30 feet in height, two, more than 30 inches in diameter, three, south of Acola Creek, the trees located west of Hemlock Street, and four, north of Acola Creek, the trees located west of Laurel Street. These rules are listed under chapter 17, point 70, point 030, additional requirements of the Cannon Beach Tree Ordinance of the Cannon Beach Municipal Code. Please see section J, items one, two, three, and four. In closing, we ask you to let us know how you see the process for the Cannon Beach Heritage and Significant Trees Program moving forward. Would it be through the Cannon Beach Parks and Community Services Committee? And then to you, the planning commission, and finally to the Cannon Beach City Council? We are here to assist you however we can. Our Cannon Beach trees are one of our community's greatest gifts. Let's all take care of them for both present and future generations. Thank you. And P.S., please see the Portland Heritage Tree Program information sheets and an actual heritage tree nomination form in your packets as possible examples for our own Cannon Beach City Program to follow. And P.P.S., if you'd like a copy of this letter that I'm reading or a short list of possible examples of trees for Cannon Beach Heritage and Significant Trees designation, please just let us know.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I mean, my, my first feeling is that the Parks and Recreation here in Cannon Beach would be the body that, that should be, um, be involved with this and then, and then forwarding that to, I, I, to city council. I don't really see the planning commission, uh, being that involved with this particular project.
Okay.
So anyways, that's, that's my feeling. And then the other, the other thing I wanted to know was, um, looking at the heritage tree nomination form from Portland Parks and Recreation, it seems like a very straightforward, uh, uh, form to follow, uh, and it covers, um, the basis of who owns the property and who's conceding to put that on, on the list. Um, so is that, I mean, I, I would go, I, I would certainly be in favor of following the form that they're using, but, um, I don't, I don't know if you've gotten any other examples of other forms, but to me, that seems, uh, pretty basic and straightforward.
Good, thank you.
And I would, I would agree. Hopefully that, I think it should be a part of.
I agree. You're right on on that one.
Okay, well, uh.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion too about creating heritage trees. And that is, um, if we could have some place where people who are, you know, applying for building permits, uh, could go to, to get some suggestions for, um, trees that we would like to see in Cannon Beach that might become rare, large, small, different, distinct, something besides hemlock and spruce. That, that there would be a, a body in Cannon Beach that would make recommendations. Maybe go to, uh, a lot that is going to be built on, look at the plants and suggest, uh, trees that, that are wanted in Cannon Beach. And, you know, and that's something that, that, uh, I think people who are building houses worry about is, you know, what kind of plants to plant, what kind of trees to plant, and, and what will work with, with what they have designed as their house. And, uh, I think that could be a very valuable service and a, a wanted service rather than, you know, the sort of, you know, if you want to get rid of a tree, you've got to go through hell to do it.
So, Joe, I just wanted to mention to you that, um, that it seems like we're always emphasizing the native trees down here, but I was recently on the campus down in Eugene and, you know, the Olmstead Brothers helped landscape that, that college campus, and I discovered some really very, very interesting trees that I'd never seen before. And, you know, they're very proud of, of what they planted over the years. And some of those trees that I, that I found unusual, some of them are marked and some of them are not, but, um, in some cases, they're not limited to a 30-foot height. They may be smaller than that, but they're old trees. So I, I certainly think we should emphasize, uh, other plant materials rather than just the native ones.
Right, I do, I do too. Because the, the native ones will take over on their own.
I, I totally agree. And I, I went on, my daughter's going on to college next year and I went to Oregon and Oregon State and, you know, both of them have beautiful, almost nurseries as campuses. And they're educational, they're amazing. And, and so we are currently drafting their new plant list and tree, uh, bro, kind of packet or brochure, and this is perfect. So we hope to get it to you next month. If not, it'll be in the next couple of months, depending on, you know, to how, how things come up. But that's going to be for your review and for designer review board. I'm, I hope that you'll have a shot at that as well.
Okay, is there any other comments, uh, on the heritage tree program?
Thank you, Jen.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay, uh, anything else then for good of the order?
I have, I have something that's not, um, good of the order, would be the opposite actually. Last name for Jill, uh, I don't know if everyone knows that, uh, but, you know, this is Jill Turner's resignation and, uh, definitely not good for my vote, but, uh, just wanted everyone to know that and wish her the best and everything, uh, good.
I'm going to miss you here, Jill.
Yes, very good.
I hope you're off to a very good end, which we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Putting up with my shenanigans.
She mentioned that frequently.
I thought, I thought. Oh, gosh, I thought you had to get a city six months' notice. You can't leave until you, there's a replacement. Okay, no, it's been great working with you. Okay, if there's nothing more, we are adjourned. Good night.